Unfortunately, one of the requirements of her job. And that last line that we said, that we just sang here. Yet she on earth hath union with God the three and one, and mystic sweet communion with those whose rest is won. O happy ones and holy Lord, give us grace that we, like them, meek and lowly may dwell on high with thee, the ones who have gone on before us. Hebrews chapter 12, verses 1 through 4. Second of the six meetings that we'll be having, there are two being on Sunday, the special meetings for the month of October, looking unto Jesus, the author and finisher of our faith. Hebrews 12, 1 through 4. Wherefore seeing we also are compassed about with so great a cloud of witnesses, we just sang about them, let us lay aside every weight and the sin which does so easily beset us, and let us run with patience the race that is set before us. Looking unto Jesus, the author and finisher of our faith, our context for this set of meetings. Who for that joy that was set before him endured the cross, despising the shame, and is set down at the right hand of the throne of God, for consider him, that endured such contradiction of sinners against himself, lest you be wearied and faint in your minds; he have not yet resisted unto blood, striving against sin. Heavenly Father. Lord, thank you, Lord, for those who were able to make it out this evening. Lord, I pray for them, and ask, Lord, that the message tonight, Lord, will be especially sweet. Lord, I pray that it will edify, and strengthen, and encourage, and embolden them in their lives, Lord, as we strive to live for you, Lord, and to finish our course that's been set before us. Glorify yourself, Lord, through all that's said and done tonight, and we ask it in the name of our precious Savior, the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen. Our context this evening is the first half of verse number one. Wherefore seeing, we are compassed about with so great a cloud of witnesses. All of Hebrews chapter 11, the preceding chapter, often referred to as the Hall of Faith, Paul lists eighteen people in the Old Testament, who exercised great faith in the Lord, and so cites them as witnesses to the Hebrews of the necessity of exercising such faith. Abel, Enoch, Noah, Abraham, Isaac, Jacob, Joseph, Moses, Joshua. He mentions Rahab, Gideon, Barak, Samson, Jephthah, David, Samuel, the prophets, and then he mentions others, others. The chapter ends with verse 40. God having provided some better thing for us, that they without us should not be made perfect. All those that have gone before, that have gone on ahead of us, are waiting, wait the consummation, as it says in the hymn that we just sang. It's not going to happen until the Lord says, "The church age is done, go get your bride." And it's coming fast. Oh, is it coming fast? The reference being, of course, to us receiving our eternal promises made to us by the Lord. Then Paul continues on with our text. Wherefore seeing, we also are compassed about with so great a cloud of witnesses. The cloud of witnesses that comprises those both previous to, and many who are or were contemporary with us, includes our Savior himself, the apostles, especially Paul, men like Silas, Timothy, Titus, and so on, just far, far too many to address in a single message. How could you? But in 1 Corinthians 11:1, Paul admonishes us, "Be followers of me even as I am of Christ." Paul, the apostle to the Gentiles, in Philippians 3:17, he says, "Brethren, be followers together of me, and mark them which walk so, as you have us for an ensample." Now though the Lord Jesus Christ is indeed the author and finisher of our faith, it is the apostle Paul, and those who followed after him, who put that faith forged and founded by the Lord Jesus Christ to a practical exercise in their day-to-day lives, to whom we are able to look to, to read the record. And so, mark them as our examples to follow. But also, along with the book of Acts, and the epistles of Paul, there are a great number of extra biblical books, extra biblical sources, that have been written to tell us of the trials and the triumphs of our cloud of witnesses. I brought just a very few with me tonight. Fox's Book of Martyrs. Everybody ought to own this book. You ought to read it every year. Fox's Book of Martyrs. And who were our contemporaries? Harlan Popoff, tortured for his faith. Peter Wrencheck, A Path Not Lined With Roses. Richard Wormbrand, tortured for Christ. And then one that I confess that I'm still struggling to get through, but I've mentioned it many times to you, The Martyr's Mirror. That's just very few, right there. I mean, there's, ah, let's see, I think I wrote it in my notes here. I'm looking for here, yeah. Grace Abounding to the Chief of Sinners, John Bunyan's autobiography. There's another good one. John Bunyan, his allegory, The Pilgrim's Progress, probably only second to the authorized version of the Bible as far as sales. That used to be in this country, back in the early years of this country, that you could almost count on in every home, if they had a book, the book they were going to have would be the Bible and Pilgrim's Progress. That's usually where you learned to read, was from those two books. Martyr's Mirror, The Bloody Theater, Good Night, The Record of Martyrs in Here. I mean, I'm only up to the year of 1553 right now, and I'm just about halfway through of the martyrdom, the torture. It's a bloody book of Baptists and their persecution. I think it goes up to the year 1660. I mean, there's just a plethora of good books out there that you should read about the lives of Christians who have exercised incredible, great faith in their mortal lives. And it's worth reading those books. It's worth reading about these people. You know, I mean, we've got 2,000 years' worth of Christian history, of Christians who, you know, went out and served the Lord. You know, some of them never left their little towns where they were from, the areas where they were from, others went to the other sides of the world. Many of them died serving Christ. Go over to Philippians chapter 3, please. Philippians chapter 3, and we're going to read verses 7 to 15. Philippians 3, beginning at verse 7. But what things were gained to me, those I counted loss for Christ. Yea, doubtless, and I count all things but loss, for the excellency of the knowledge of Christ Jesus my Lord. For whom I have suffered the loss of all things, and do count them but done, that I may win Christ, and be found in him, not having mine own righteousness, which is of the law, but that which is through the faith of Christ, the righteousness which is of God by faith, that I may know him, and the power of his resurrection, and the fellowship of his sufferings being made conformable unto his death, if by any means I might attain unto the resurrection of the dead. Not as though I had already attained either, were already perfect, but I follow after, if that I may apprehend that for which also I am apprehended of Christ Jesus. Brethren, I count not myself to have apprehended, but this one thing, I do, forgetting those things which are behind, and reaching forth to those things which are before. I press toward the mark for the prize of the high calling of God in Christ Jesus. Let us therefore, as many as be perfect, be thus minded. And if in anything you be otherwise minded, God shall reveal even this unto you. As I've said many times, for me, these are some of the greatest verses in the Pauline Epistles concerning our day-to-day striving to be conformed to the image of Jesus Christ. Romans 8:29. What we will find concerning the apostle Paul, who admonishes us to follow him as our example, is that he never, and that's what we see right here, he never considered himself to have attained, to have arrived, and so to have become the ultimate Christian. Quite frankly, he probably was, but that's not what he thought of himself. Romans chapter 6. I always find this an amazing confession, but the honesty of it is important. Romans 6, verse 14 to 25. For sin shall not have dominion over you, for ye are not under the law, but under grace. What then, shall we sin? Because we are not under the law, but under grace? God forbid! Know ye not that to whom ye yield yourselves servants to obey his servants, ye are to whom ye obey, whether of sin unto death, or of obedience unto righteousness? But God be thanked, that ye were the servants of sin. But ye have obeyed from the heart that form of doctrine which was delivered you. Being then made free from sin, ye became the servants of righteousness. I speak after the manner of men, because of the infirmity of your flesh. For as ye have yielded your members servants to uncleanness and to iniquity unto iniquity, even so now yield your members servants to righteousness unto holiness. For when ye were the servants of sin, ye were freed from righteousness. What fruit have you then in those things, where, if ye are now ashamed? For the end of those things is death. But now being made free from sin, and become servants to God, ye have your fruit unto holiness and the everlasting life. For the wages of sin is death, but the gift of God is eternal life, through Jesus Christ, our Lord. And then he goes into chapter 7. And again, verse 14, pick it up there. For we know that the law is spiritual. But I'm carnal, sold under sin. For that which I do, I allow not; but what I would, that do I not; but what I hate, that do I. This is Paul, Paul, the apostle to the Gentiles. If then I do that which I would not, I consent unto the law that it is good. Now it is no more I that do it, but sin that dwelleth in me. For I know that in me, that is in my flesh dwelleth, no good thing. For to will is present with me, but how to perform that which is good, I find not. I mean, this is our example. And talking about his day-to-day battle with his mortal flesh, never mind the world and the devil. This is the fight I have with my flesh every day. That's why Sunday morning, I was talking to you about how you start your day, you've got to get up in your mind, ready to wage war, and it starts with this thing. Because believe me, as soon as you wake up, it's ready to go. It's ready to go another round, and it's going to, if you'll let it. Now, understanding this, yep, the flesh is no good, the flesh is sinful, it's going to be that way, I can't do anything about the fact that it's corrupted, no good. A lot of folks, as it says in Galatians 5:13, use it as an occasion to the flesh, and, well, this is how it's going, you know, I can't do anything. Well, baloney, you can do something about it. You've got to choose to do something about it. It's not an excuse to allow your flesh to run amok, and to sin, and do what it wants. Get it under control. Get it under control. And that's how folks are, how they raise their kids today. You know, this, what do they call it? This stupid term they're using today, gentle parenting, which basically means you're not doing anything, you're just letting the kid run wild. I just think back to my own childhood, that whole heavy leather garrison belt that my parents kept hung in the hall closet, and we knew what it was there for. Now, today, you'd go to jail for that. No, they'll send you to, and then your kid ends up going to jail later on, because they can't understand why, you know, they're like an animal, because they got raised as animals, and they behave like animals. None of us has arrived. None of us are any better than anybody else. None of us is superior to others. We're all at different levels of our spiritual growth. But we are to all be constantly growing. If you've stagnated, if you've hit a plateau, all right, then you've got to figure out what's wrong, what's holding you up. Pray your way through that. Lieve the blood of Christ. Lord, help me. Show me what I've got to do. Show me what I've got to change. Show me what's got to go, so I can keep pressing towards the mark. Standing still, or I talked a couple weeks ago about being like a hamster on a wheel, you've got this cycle going here, where, you know, you're living for God, then you mess up, and you sin, then you get right with God, then you're living for God, then you mess up. A lot of people think that's the normal Christian life. I was like, no. No, if you're stuck, you are, you're a hamster on a wheel here. Get off that thing. Get going forward. That is the essential. Now, from the time of his conversion until the time of his martyrdom, the apostle Paul strove to be an example to other believers of the continuing necessity of striving for spiritual growth, and for continuing perfection in the believer's life. He understood this well, because the Lord had allowed him, the Lord had allowed him a tantalizing sneak peek into what awaits 2 Corinthians 12, 1 through 6. 2 Corinthians 12, verse 6 verses. This is not expedient for me, doubtless, to glory. I have come to visions and revelations of the Lord. I knew a man in Christ about fourteen years ago, whether in the body, I cannot tell, or whether out of the body, I cannot tell. God knoweth such a one caught up to the third heaven. Well, if he got caught up to the third heaven, he didn't go in his mortal body. That's one of the things right there that lets you know, lets you understand what your soul is. That's not tonight's subject. And I knew such a man, whether in the body or out of the body, I cannot tell. God knoweth how that he was caught up into paradise, and heard unspeakable words, which it is not lawful for a man to utter. Of such a one will I glory, yet of myself I will not glory, but in mine infirmities. For though I would desire to glory, I shall not be a fool. For I will say the truth. But now I forbear, lest any man should think of me above that which he seeth me to be, or that he heareth of me. It's a reference to Paul back in Acts 14, verses 19 and 20, and he's in Lystra, and he gets stoned to death in Lystra. He's dead, or the body's dead, he gets to go to heaven. Now, the Lord allowed Paul this little sneak peek, in order to give him the strength that he was going to need to endure his many trials, and so that he would not quit. But of course, to get to sneak peek, Paul had to get stoned to death, in order to get to see the Lord in heaven, and then get sent back, in order to gain what he was going to need. That's, there's the meaning of tough love, folks, right there. God says, okay, I'm going to give you what you need to endure all this, but first you've got to get stoned to death. Then he lets you come up to heaven and see all that glory, and he says, okay, now you're going back. So, I wonder if he got, when he got up, he went back into Lystra, he's like, come on, stone me again. Amen. You know, but there's a truth there. What's it take to get what you need to get through? Maybe it's going to take something pretty severe. That's not man's way of thinking. That's God's way of thinking. Man, just to ensure that Paul remained humble about it all, as we just read, the Lord allows him to be afflicted by the devil. 2 Corinthians 12, verses 7 down through 10. Lest I should be exalted above measure, through the abundance of revelations, there was given to me a thorn in the flesh, the messenger of Satan to buffet me, lest I should be exalted above measure. For this thing I besought the Lord thrice, and it might depart from me. And he said unto me, My grace is sufficient for thee, for my strength is made perfect in weakness. Most gladly therefore will I, rather glory in mine infirmities, that the power of Christ may rest upon me. Therefore I take pleasure in infirmities, in reproaches, in necessities, in persecutions, in distresses, for Christ's sake, for when I am weak, then am I strong. That's a tough lesson to learn. You want kind of power, that was in the life of the apostle Paul, that's what it takes. Most are like, uh-uh. It's enough of an inconvenience to be expected to come to church three times a week. I don't want to go through all that. I'll pass. The Lord says, okay, it's your choice. But there's a mighty big cloud of witnesses up there in heaven, a lot of them that said, yeah, I'll take it, I'll take it. Paul's eyesight, it was so bad, in over Galatians 6, he talks about, you know, Aron, you, you know, so great a letter, you know, he had to write with letters big enough that even he could see them. Now, I don't know how big they were, but, you know, it was to the point, he had to have other folks write his epistles for him, he dictated to them. And then to keep people, because some had been writing letters in his name, you know, he signed it himself, so the folks would know it was him, you know, but he had to use these big letters, big enough for him to be able to actually see his own handwriting. Well, my handwriting, because I just don't write well, that's why I can't read it. Paul was certainly going to need that precious edition of heaven to go on in his life, if you're still over in 2 Corinthians, go back into chapter 11, pick up 21 to 28. I speak as concerning reproach, as though we had been weak. Howbeit whereinsoever any is bold, I speak foolishly, I am bold also. Are they Hebrews? So am I. Are they Israelites? So am I. Are they the seed of Abraham? So am I. Are they ministers of Christ? I speak as a fool, I am more. In labors, more abundant; in stripes, above measure; in prisons, more frequent; in deaths, oft. Of the Jews, five times received I forty stripes, saved one. Thrice was I beaten with rods; once I was stoned. Thrice I suffered shipwreck, a night and a day have I been in the deep. In journeyings often, in perils of waters, in perils of robbers, in perils of my own countrymen, in perils by the heathen, in perils in the city, in perils in the wilderness, in perils in the sea, in perils among false brethren. In weariness, in painfulness, in watchings often, in hunger, in thirst, in fastings often, in cold, in nakedness, besides those things that are without, that which come upon me daily, the care of all the churches. There most likely has never been, nor will there be, another believer who has suffered and endured as much for our Lord in their lifetime as the apostle Paul, including being martyred by Rome for the Savior. Go with me now to the Gospel of John, chapter 10, please. Gospel of John, chapter 10, first, verses 15 and 16, John 10, verses 15 and 16. Another sheet I have, which are not of this fold. Them also I must bring, and they shall hear my voice, and there shall be one fold and one shepherd. Therefore doth my Father love me, because I lay down my life, that I might take it again. From there, go over to chapter 17 in John, John 17, the Lord's Prayer, verses 20, 21, and 22. Neither pray I for these alone, but for them also which shall believe on me through their word, that they all may be one, as thou Father art in me, and I in thee, that they also may be one in us, that the world may believe that thou hast sent me. And the glory which thou gavest me, I have given them, that they may be one even as we are one. But it's not just the witnesses of the past who we need to look to, but we need to look to those brothers and sisters in Christ with which we live today. Every one of you has the opportunity to add personally to that great cloud of witnesses in your mortal life right now. 2 Corinthians 3:2. Ye are our epistle, written in our hearts, known and read of all men. Every one of you, every day, has the opportunity to be an open witness and testimony for the Lord Jesus Christ, to both the saved and the lost alike, of the great grace of God in Jesus Christ. Our context tonight being about that great cloud of witnesses and Our context tonight being about that great cloud of witnesses and exercising their great faith, and the things that occurred in their life because of their willingness to exercise great faith. You can do the same thing. You too can be an encouragement to others around you by how you live your life for Jesus Christ. The potential certainly exists for a believer to be another Paul.